Welcome to the September 6th Board of Selectment Meeting. A select board meeting, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any citizen's statements or petitions that we wish to be heard? We have no correspondence. You want to run down? Why don't you run, it's, you know what? I'm gonna just pause just two minutes.
I saw a physical card.
That's my fault.
Guys, may you want to speak up a little louder or get closer to a microphone, to a micro speaking?
What?
You couldn't hear.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, what a surprise, there was mail.
What a surprise. There's a handwritten note in the in our mailbox downstairs. It's a dear select board, thank you for your support of the senior center expansion. We have our architect in place and doing site reviews. We will continue to update you with our progress, signed Phil Sibley and Hagen-Gera. Number four, sign the deed, transfer.
Real quick, can we just touch on the email we all received on the Ice House? Just as a way of an update, because I'm not sure if folks know what's going on with that.
Sure.
Yeah, the email, we had a citizen send us an email regarding status of an old Ice House on Lake Nitmuck. And just so we're all aware that the Historic Commission's been engaged to work with the, meet with the owner, see if there is a thing that can be done from a preservation standpoint. So that is an action that's being taken. And at some point they're going to look to get in front of us to give us an update on how those conversations went. And they intend to meet with the owners to face later this month.
Thank you.
The update.
Do you have the letter? The email? Yeah. We're going to reference it, we should read it, I'm just trying to find it here.
Saw on August 19th from Pauline Palmer.
Would you like me to read it? Sure.
I am writing as a follow-up to a conversation I had with Mike Goddard earlier today. I've addressed this issue several years ago with one of the Wagner owners, but nothing has happened since that conversation three to four years ago. The old Ice House on Kinsley Lane has reached a point that I think needs to be addressed again. And I ask that steps be taken to have the building demolished. It's unfortunate, nothing was done to save this historic site when it could have been saved. I originally contacted the building inspector several years ago about the condition of this structure and my concerns. Don't remember who it was, someone in the department I contacted was a friend of Mr. Wagner and reached out to him about my concerns. Mr. Wagner did come by and close the barn doors that had been open and told my husband and I that he had plans to build a gazebo on this location at some point. Since then, nothing has happened except that the Ice House is in worse condition now. It's a hazard and an eyesore for those of us who live in this area. I would like to request that the building be taken down, thank you for your time. I would appreciate someone contacting me to let me know the next steps, Pauline Palmer.
And I had replied to Mrs. Palmer along with the building inspector and asked him to do an inspection of it to see if it needed to be condemned, taken down, or what else. And then in the meantime, I think, Mike, you've reached out to Historic. So it's still outstanding with the building inspector to see what the actual situation with the structure is, right? So. Alright, so we don't need to talk, we can go over number four, we've already signed the deed that was previously voted at a town meeting. On number five, considered purchase and sale document of the paddock property is counsel on? Uh, no. Okay. I'm just sending her a text just to make sure that she's not having a problem getting on. Then I'm gonna send her the the link. Is anybody else, so both of you were able to get in at that link, right?
Uh, yep, and I'm just testing the link right now. And there's five people, it's a different link. So just hold on one second. Dan will have to merge these recordings at the end, we'll let him know. Do you want me to message you that link?
Right, turning off, if you're on, we're ready to talk about Article Five, which is the paddock property purchase and sale.
Yes, good evening, I am here.
Great.
So, sorry, I have prepared for you in in accordance with the authorization from town meeting and discussions with and information received from Sellers Council, discussions with Anne Mazur and others, a standard form purchase and sale agreement for the paddock property. And with a few specific tweaks based on specific requests that, that the land use folks had made. So I have obviously not yet, I have transmitted it to Sellers Council, but we have not yet had any feedback. And I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have about it. It is based on a fairly standard form PNS.
Anne Mazur, have you had a chance to look at it? Or obviously, I guess you did if the land use committee has commented on it, is that right?
Well, um, I I, well, I just got the PNS last night, and yes, I looked at it, it looks fine. I haven't, didn't have it to bring to the land use committee.
Okay, but you reviewed it, it looks fine, and this is in accordance with what we voted at town meeting in May, right?
It looks good to me.
Correct, I, I think with respect to tonight, I wanted to get it to you to have you all have a chance to take a look at it and ask questions. There may be some comments back from Sellers Council. So I will, you know, wait to hear back from them, I don't expect there should be any major changes. But then I will bring it back when it's ready to be signed. It is not yet ready for signature, but hopefully that won't take too long.
Okay, so it's in this, so it's in Sellers Council's hands and they're reviewing it?
Correct.
Right. Any members of the board have any questions?
No.
Alright. Let's, thank you very much, let's move on to number six, which is to interview a new member of the, of the Conservation Commission. I just want to read to you an email that was sent to me from the Chair of the ConCon that says, "I won't be able to attend tomorrow's select board meeting as it conflicts with a previously scheduled MACC training class on managing conservation land. I reached out to the other commissioners requesting they attend so as to be able to participate in the interview and discussion. Below is my previous write-up as to the strengths of the two candidates I'm available to discuss." And it's signed by Carl, so his comments are, "The ConCon interviewed Lonnie Tinio on June 22nd and Leah Bada on July 13th. Linda Farthing expressed interest but withdrew on July 24th. On the 27th Amendment Conservation Commission discussed the merits of both candidates and we summarize as follows. Lonnie has a strong background in construction, is a lifelong resident of Mendon. He'd be an asset when reviewing engineering plans and other documents provided by applicants for projects that would move earth and otherwise impact buffer zones protected by the Mass Wetlands Protection Act and Mendon bylaws and would have the expertise to ask hard questions about vague proposals from developers. He has decades of familiarity with the topology of Mendon and would know the history of parcels coming before the commission. Leah has a strong background in green projects and is an organic farmer focused on ecological sustainability. She has volunteered on many regional and Mendon projects, including Solarized Mendon Upton, the Town Hall renovation, the Mendon Green Alliance Group on Facebook, and the recent Massachusetts Biomap Initiative. Her expertise would be invaluable when dealing with conservation and water quality issues. She would be a strong force to help manage the town parcels, which the Conservation Commission is responsible." And he had, Carl had previously said to me that they had indicated that either one of these candidates would be fine because they were both great candidates. So I just asked Lonnie, can you, can you kind of step up? If there's anything you, you want to say, we all certainly know you. Or you can just see if anybody has any questions, but do you have anything that you'd like to say to us?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I, I know all of you, I served with you just recently on the board, others in previous boards. The, one of the businesses that we do do is land development for residential. And so the knowledge that I can bring to the table from, from that aspect, just knowing what we have to go through for conservation meetings and getting things approved, and as well as the rules and regulations that you have to follow, we're constantly bumping into that. So I just bring that knowledge to the table, able to review plans, you know, first and understanding what, what to look on, look for on the plans. And again, growing up here and living here my whole life, obviously, I know a lot of the nooks and crannies of the town and where the wetlands may be or may not be if they're somehow missed, so. Other than that, if anybody has any questions for me.
About about Leah, would you like to make a statement? I know you're joining us remotely.
Sure, good evening, can everyone hear me?
Sure.
Okay, just want to make sure. So a little about me, a little bit my background, but the reason why I want to be on the ConCon is because it is to protect our community's natural resources. And I feel like the way that I lead my life is very much the way of protecting natural resources and in line with conservation. I have always lived with sustainability in mind, but have been doing this with my property here since 2015 when I moved to Mendon. My property's an old farm, which has allowed me to be a sustainable, organic produce grower. And my property is farmed and gardened in a way to preserve and bring wildlife into my yard and offer a natural, healthy ecology for all things living. I do also have a big interest in not only protecting our water supply, but also protecting our water quality. Being that most of us here in Mendon are on well water, this is an extremely important natural resource to protect and preserve. Water is the lifeblood of any society. Just as the Egyptians and the Romans, who went to great lengths to provide water to their communities. And without water, you can't sustain a community. I also have a water containment system that I and my husband installed that holds up to 1,300 gallons of water. We haven't needed it much this year, but it's necessary, it's a necessity to make sure I can sustainably water the crops I grow. I am also very familiar with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, Biomap, and have worked with the National Heritage Trust to help preserve land for endangered species or species of special interest in our state. And I am also familiar with the tools and maps the National Heritage Trust utilizes to determine priority habitat. I am the admin on the Mendon Green Alliance Facebook page and have helped out and volunteered for projects with Solarized Mass and the Land Use Committee, as you said before. And I was also very happy to lend my expertise in native plants and trees when Anne Mazur asked me to give some input when we were finalizing plans for the town hall and police station gardens. I would be an asset on sidewalks as well as I will be able to recognize 90% of the plants and trees invasive and native and creatures, big and small, that we have here in Mendon. I'm also a bird nerd and I'm lucky to live on a property where I can study all these great birds that are drawn here, and the Audubon comes to my house to watch my birds as well. I would be happy to give anyone on the select board a tour of my property to show how living sustainably and with conservation in mind is possible for everyone. And I don't have any conflicts of interest, I don't have a business in town besides growing crops and I sell them somewhat privately at farmers markets and to restaurants. So I'm here for the town of Mendon to make sure we go in the right positive direction. So thank you.
Does anybody on the board have questions for either one of them?
So I guess I have a question about how you see the Conservation Commission's role when there are potential violations? Like if there's, say, clear cutting without permission? Like how, how you would see the Conservation Commission's role in something like that?
Why don't we start with you, Lonnie?
Yeah, so the, the Conservation has a very clear set of guidelines of what needs to be followed. There is leeway given in certain buffer zones as far as, you know, you have your no build, your, you know, no disturb and, and, you know, you, the buffers on where you can do a little bit of work if you file an order of conditions. So it's kind of a broad question as far as what would you do in this situation? You'd, it would have to be very specific, if somebody had just clear cut a bunch of trees in the wetland area and, well, yes, we have to take a look at that and we have to enforce any rules that, that are applied by the violation and then find a way to either recreate or recreate in another area, but, you know, again, those those rules are already set in place, it's not, you know, a situation where you'd be just like, eh, that one's okay. You know, you have to, every, every situation comes with its own specific set of guidelines that would have to be then be acted on.
But is it fair to say that if, if somebody cut down trees, it took something out, you, the ConCon could make them put it back?
Yes, absolutely, I mean, that's, and a lot of times, that's what the ConCon does, especially when there's a subdivision or even a single home being built. If there's a wetland crossing that has to be put in, you'll do replication. And generally, the replication is even far more than what is actually disturbed. So if you're disturbing 10%, they're going to want you to put back 30% of the, of the, whatever the native plant is that, that you're affecting. You know, so we've come in, into, it happened, it happened overnight, we had to, we had to put a big culvert in and then the wetland recreation was a lot more than we'd actually disturbed. But it's just part of, of what needs to be done to make sure that things are protected and things continue to, to sustain.
Leah, do you want to?
Sure. You can't put the worms back in the can once something is destroyed. You can replant, it takes years and years and years for that to happen again. I've seen it too often happen in Mendon that things are done and then people go, oops, sorry. So I think we need to let people know that develop here in this town that we are strong in our conservation and that they need to ask the ConCon before they do things like this. I think a lot of prevention would go a long way here. And if things by chance do happen and get, get clear cut, I'm thinking about Lake, Lake Nitmuck as I'm saying this because when you do that around a lake and you just clear cut, it causes so many problems. But we need to make people responsible, and yes, we do need to put things back. But again, can't put the worms in the can, it's better to prevent something from being destroyed and then put it back later. So I think if, if people knew that and were well aware of it, that we did hold people responsible, they would think twice before doing it in the first place.
Mike?
Question to both of you, just, as these, both your answers are interesting. What, what do you, each of you feel the role of the ConCon is? And Leah, why don't you go first?
Sure, by definition, the role of the ConCon is to protect our community's natural resources. There's always going to be development, but we have to be smart and we have to do it in such a way that we protect those resources.
I mean, I would agree with what Leah just said also, you know, the role of the ConCon is in those situations that it's brought forward to you and you're acting on a, a new development or whatever it may be, that you're doing it in a way that does protect those resources. So that you're being proactive by having that ability to do.
Any other questions?
As one other point to clarify, because I think Leah brought it up, she has no business coming for the ConCon. And Lonnie, to some extent, do you see you having business coming for this committee?
I don't have anything on the radar coming for it. But, I mean, if a piece of land comes up that's near a wetland, it's definitely possible. For instance, right now, we're, we're building up one house in Mendon right now that isn't anywhere near a wetland. Thank you.
Any other questions?
A comment, and it may not be, so what's interesting is the Chair of the ConCon actually says we've got two strong candidates, which I agree with. But he also outlines two specific skillsets that they each bring.
Right.
What would have been helpful, and I don't know if we can get it, is what is the, what skillsets does the ConCon need? Does it need the expertise in terms of the engineering and the engagement of developers? Or the sustainability and managing the parcels, right? So maybe we can just?
Well, the one thing I would, I would say is, the vacancy has been there since June and I promised Carl that we would pick somebody tonight because he's been asking for a while. So I, I think they gave us what they did, he asked for other members of the ConCon to be here. I don't know if any of them are. I don't know if any of them want to have, want to have their hand up or want to speak or comment. But if not, I would look for a motion from somebody to make a decision.
I move to appoint Leah Bada Whiting to the Conservation Commission. I mean, I think we, we have two strong candidates.
Do you have a second?
Since Bob's sitting in the audience, I'm just gonna reach out and ask Bob, since you sit on this board, what, what, what is the? I see a lot when I, when I watch that board, it's, first of all, it's very long. It's probably the longest meeting that happens here at Mendon, but the, the, the main thing I see is the, is it's very hard for somebody to take responsibility to go out and do something that might include human contact because none of those situations are positive ones, they're always us enforcing or us asking a constituent to do something. And that seems to be the main thing that floats over and over and over again from meeting to meeting to meeting. That's the resolution that it seems the town is looking for is, is, is people to make decisions there. Like, is that true? Like, is that a true statement? Like, decision-making is a difficult part, or is it really like you need more information from the experts?
What we're looking for is somebody knowledgeable in weapons and the protection of it. There's classes, I particularly call that one tonight, there's next month, they start, there's a whole series of them, all weapons protection and, and the steps to protect the Massachusetts wetlands. But we need somebody that has knowledge in weapons and somebody that already has knowledge has one step. You know, in the right direction. There's a lot to be said for both candidates. Whether it's management skills or whether it's weapons and, and knowledge of it, they both play at a role. As, as we came up with a decision from the ConCon perspective, is all we have that positives. It's really the board feels makes the most sense. Do you need more management or do you need more boot up? Honestly, I would like to spend more time with another person going to sites, making sure that they're following, somebody in books I've been, I've been following up on. It's all about continually going to these sites, not just signing off one time and forgetting that they have a team you split for wetlands with. It's following up once a month, every other week. Going back to make sure the work is being done in the manner it's supposed to be done. That's what we need, is people that have the time and the ability to follow up.
And I, and I think in fairness, there's two other vacancies, there's an admin vacancy and there's a conservation agent vacancy, which there'd been a few people interviewed in the last few days, in the last couple of weeks. So I think that'll go a long way towards filling that gap too, and having some professional services in there too, which has been lacking. So the, and when the members do it, it slides you because you don't have an agent available. Right?
Because we're relying on the engineers to give us the information that they want us to sign off. Who isn't going to give you a best case scenario for themselves if you allow them to?
Okay, so we, so we, we're in agreement with that, that's why there's been three different people interviewed for the agent position within the last week. So what we're trying to resolve now is the question, and you're saying the same thing everybody else did, is they both would be good, they have different skillsets. And I guess we need to, we need to make that decision. So right now, there's a motion on the floor to, to appoint Leah. Again, I'll ask, is there a second for, for Leah?
Ball final question?
Sure.
The role of an agent. What skillset does that agent bring? If I looked at these, the breakdown here, is it redundant to the strengths Lonnie brings? Or would be redundant to the strengths that Leah brings?
I think it's to both of them.
Well, yeah, sorry, I, I may be able to answer that, sorry. So a, a conservation agent should be somebody that's actually skilled in that's, in, in being a conservation, for lack of a better term, cop, right? So that person is, is likely maybe got a degree in, in conservation and they're actually going to be the one for the town that is going out and looking at enforcement, looking at doing the sidewalks that right now uh doing the sidewalks that right now a lot of the members do. Uh, and what happens is that the members go to the sidewalk, they bring the information back that they see, and then a decision is made. This agent now is going to be the one doing that sidewalk, bringing it back to the board for the board to then work with the town engineer and amongst themselves to make that final decision. Um, so by having the agent, it takes that burden off of, and not that I want to make this any harder on you guys. I think Leah and I both just said that, you know, or I heard Leah say it, that, you know, she's available for those sidewalks and wants to be involved uh as as well as as I am, I I'm my business is is local in the next town over, so I'm constantly around. And and as Leah said, uh, that she is as well, so.
Yep, I work from home and I have a very flexible schedule.
I mean, I'll second the motion to put it to vote. Motion been made and seconded to nominate to appoint Leah. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, this is the hardest thing I've had to do since I got here. Um, I'll say aye with the caveat that I just was looking and there are two positions coming due in six months, correct?
There is.
So there are more chances for the board. I am curious what a new person, why I'm doing this for you, Brent? We'll have uh on the board.
Okay, well, there is, all right, so so it's uh three. Is it aye? All right, so it's four, so Leah is appointed. Thank you both very much. And keep in mind that um there is another position that's coming up in at uh in June. So that's.
I I would like to, yeah, thank you Lonnie for stepping up. I know I know you do a lot for this town, so I just think it's good to give Leah an opportunity.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, number seven. Interview, appoint housing authority candidates. Um, I know we have Mr. Ed Blair. Just wanted to, can you come up to the table and tell us about yourself?
I've I've lived in Menden most of my life, went to school here. I went to vocational school after my eight eight years in Menden. Um, I've never been on any town boards, okay? Um, I've always been busy working or raising a family and things of that nature. I actually had intentions of running for the elected position on that board. And I actually chimed in a little bit too late. The papers already had to be in when I made my decision to do that. So unfortunately, when Mr. Hoffman passed away, I decided that I would like to give back to the town a little bit um and help to make sure that the complex down at Sunrise Apartment is is taken care of um to make sure that those who live there have the things that they need that are provided by Milford Housing and Menden Housing um so that everything is safe and, you know, they have a nice place to live. And that's basically um my what what my intention was to to be on that, aboard with with Mary and and Peter that I've known my whole life.
Just just so everybody understands, uh, the Housing Authority oversees the Sunrise Apartments. And there are some members who are elected, but there is one member um who actually is the um uh tenant member. And Mr. Blair lives in at Sunrise and.
They grew up on Northbridge Road. And my sister still lives in the house that I that I was brought up in, so. So I would just, I would just like the opportunity to 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 sit and be able to to help make sure that everything runs smooth over there.
And Mr. Atkinson, the other the other applicant had um had previously been uh appointed. He actually ran for select board and had been appointed. Um, but then left left for Vermont for a while. He'd been for Vermont for, he was also a a, you know, born here in Menden too and lived here. But but I'm not sure what his circumstances are now. But um Mr. Blair is here in front of us. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I like, I would just like the opportunity to 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 help try to keep everything going down there.
All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
Uh, I move to appoint Edward Blair to the uh as a tenant member of the Menden Housing Authority.
Second. For to expire on May twelfth, twenty twenty six, which is the uh was the was the uh position that Mr. Hoffman had had been, so you would assume his position, so you just need to go see the town clerk. Or excuse me, motion been made, is second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so now it's official. Um, once you go see the town clerk tomorrow, hopefully, and um and be sworn in. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You appreciate your efforts.
Support team.
Go team. It's hard to be here by yourself.
Okay. Um, Council on Aging, Senior Senate Director, Amy, can you come up and I printed out the the documents that you had sent. I know you also have uh corrected documents for
Yes.
Senior Citizen Day for us to sign, right?
Let me do that first.
Sure, well, we don't, you know, we'll just pass those around because we can, we've read them before, we know what they are, we're just passing around and we'll sign them.
Corrected to reflect the August second.
Great. August second is when we had actually voted, so just a typo before, so.
That's what you get for copying and pasting and using. I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read the documents that I sent out last night. Um, this, what what we are proposing as a support of a principal assessor. Um, Principal Assessor, Jean Berthold, is the person that brought the senior veteran work program to Menden. Um, it's been very successful. I've only been involved in it the last eight years. Prior to that, it was run out of the Select Board Office.
Can we leave the, sorry, call closer to you so that people can hear better.
Long day. Um, so, yeah, so I I gave you information um about how it's really stalled during the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, I did, I did um approach the Menden Select Board and asked for them to increase the wage to the uh minimum state minimum wage. And I was told no at that time. And then the pandemic came and things really, the program really didn't grow at all. We really wanted to be um sure that people were safe. Um, so anyway, now that we're here several years later, um, I've worked with um Jennifer O'Neil, our HR coordinator. She was going to be doing some or has done some research on area towns and what um they're offering, and I don't know, I know she's she's on right now too. I don't know, Jen, if you'd like to speak to that?
Sure, so, yeah, so what I did was um Amy approached me my first week here, so um, let me know what she was looking to do with this program. And I reached out to some neighboring towns just to find out, you know, were they participating in this type of program and also what they were offering to their seniors and veterans? And what I did find out is that the majority of towns are paying at fifteen dollars per hour um to the cap of fifteen hundred dollars per year, which is uh the state allowed amount. And, you know, confirmed with Upton, Northbridge, Bellingham um that they are paying that rate as well and and have active members participating in uh in that. I did reach out to um because I, as most of you know, new to the area, I reached out to some contacts I have on the South Shore. And they are also paying at that fifteen dollar rate um with the cap at fifteen hundred. And I believe we received some information that the state is looking to increase um the cap amount as well.
Okay, and um as I mentioned in my notes, uh, the the um compensation for this program, which is basically um tax, a tax abatement. The compensation comes out of the assessors overlay. Um, and again, um, we've got support there to make this increase, um, if you so choose. And I'm hoping, because right now, I'm sorry, we've got some wonderful retirees, but when they come in and they want to hear about this program and we're offering eleven dollars an hour, I'm sorry, they could they could go to McDonald's, they can go to trying to think where it was the other day, sixteen fifteen, sixteen fifty, at one of the um establishments that I walked into the door. It's just, and and they really bring something to us. They really do. Um, the if this is approved, what we would need to um is more cooperation, I shouldn't say more cooperation, further cooperation from departments. Um, people, you know, got out of the um habit of getting, you know, using somebody, utilizing somebody, especially during the pandemic. So we need, we were in the superintendent's office, and we had someone helping to stuff envelopes for payroll every couple of weeks. We were in the Clough School and with annual pro uh annual holiday programs. We um recently have gotten a request from the library and I've filled that with a new applicant. Um, and some people just, they really, they want to give back, they want to do something meaningful. Other people are coming because they're feeling the crunch. Their 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 social security isn't, you know, stretching that far. And um I got to tell you, I don't know if you've read, took the time to read this, but they don't call in sick. They don't call in sick. They're really um good, you know, um employees, if you will. They're cross between a volunteer and employee, so.
They're going to be, um, you know, if they're paid fifteen dollars an hour, they're gonna get less hours, right? So you're gonna need more people.
Well, no, I'm going to ask for you to consider increasing the amount from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. That way it would be a hundred hours even, which would be nice, because right now it's ninety one point, yeah, it's crazy, so.
And the and the funding for this comes from, I think, overlay, is that?
Overlay.
From the assessors overlay, right?
Yes, you know, and right now, right now, it's been fifteen thousand dollars for the last, right, decade or so, Kevin, do you know?
Yeah, the numbers, it, no, I can, I can see it in your spreadsheet, right?
So um, but there is, you know, I was told that there is room for more if we have, depending upon, you know, how the program grows, so.
Right. But the impact, but the, now, now, Kevin, I was talking with, Kevin, why don't you come on up too? Now, I think when I was, I was actually speaking with the with the Finance Director and Gene yesterday in the hallway about it. It is that in the understand, my understanding was that the application period for this year ended August thirty first, or that's a different.
That's a different program. That's something Kevin's going to speak to.
So so the question is, I guess my question is, if we were to make this decision um to increase it, that would affect the overlay number?
No, no, because this is paid out next in FY twenty five.
Okay, so if we do this, it'll be next year, not this.
No, no, it would start now, but the payment, so you would, the town would be voting on the budget.
The impact be next year.
Yes, correct.
Right, what you have to do is increase the overlay slightly next year. I've said this, if I could just make a comment, the purpose of the senior slash veterans board is not to give people extra money. It's to let them earn money that goes directly to offset their taxes.
Against their against their real estate taxes.
Right.
Right.
And unfortunately, the IRS a couple of years ago mandated it had to cut a paycheck and then they turn around and give it back. But if the purpose is to help seniors, and I'm going to focus on them veterans, although I'll I'll do both. It just makes sense that you want to help to the maximum amount by law. And if it's fifteen dollars an hour, most of the towns I know are paying that. And most of the towns I know are giving full sixteen hundred dollars per person.
Are we able to pin it to minimum wage? Is that something? Are we able to design it in a way that pins it?
That's that's what it is.
No, I know if we say fifteen dollars, if 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 it goes up in five years or whatever, are we able to pin the minimum wage to the payment?
Pretty sure we would have to vote it.
We would have to vote it every time?
You'd have to vote on it again.
Okay, yeah.
But I also know.
Just for ease of use, I just wonder.
I I also know the legislation pending right now with the State House through several bills pending. Most of them are to create um a seed fund, for want of a better term, where the state would appropriate a sum of money and towns could borrow from that to get a program going where they don't have one. So um there's three, three or four bills pending in that regard.
So do you actually have a number of what this would impact the budget?
Um, well, it depends how many people join. Right now, we have, oh, let's see, I just had a person come in yesterday, Jean Berthold sent something to me, I had someone joining. So we currently have like twelve.
And and I mean, Amy, it's really.
The fifteen thousand dollar number prior to COVID was where the program ranked.
Right, are you trying to hit that one thousand?
Yeah, so from twenty twenty through twenty twenty three, essentially, we averaged about above thirteen individuals, um, not necessarily maxed out on the program, but meaning the thousand dollar earnings. Um, but that's what we averaged over the last several years, just post-COVID. So I would anticipate those numbers coming up, but as Kevin pointed out, this doesn't have a direct impact on the budget per se, as short as voting an expense. It's part of the overlay that will be the responsibility of the assessors to be able to increase that.
Appropriating to the overlay isn't an expense, but it's not for back.
So so I hear two things. One, financially, you, I mean, I personally, I'm amazed that we're below minimum wage. I'm not sure that's even a question for me. We got to raise that. I think a hundred hours makes a lot of sense. Then the other thing I heard was, how do we generate more activity in the program, right? So that that that's separate thing.
It's happening.
That's something we can manage towards a budget as we go forward. See, what is the interest in the program? What kind of numbers are we seeing through this fiscal year in preparation for the budget for next year? Fair?
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I think that if there's information that is shared as well across departments, um, I have used it in our own department in in the Treasurer's Office as a great way to staff as as contingents, right? So instead of staffing to peaks and valleys, what do you do in the workplace? You use contingent employees to bridge gaps. And so some of the seniors um in this program have been instrumental in covering vacations or just, you know, being some office help. If you can look at the stage and all those boxes are gone. And we've worked really hard with um a lot of the the folks to be able to go through the day to day. Um, you know, doesn't necessarily have time to account for.
And we have the opportunity to cap participation if we need to. If we see a finance, say, every senior in town wants to participate, right?
Right.
We can cap the number, correct?
You kept it by the budget.
Right, so my my point being, that's our, that's our value, that's our variable that as we go forward, we can, we can even run some numbers and say, give me a a range of high participation, low participation.
Thirty thousand dollars for the maximum participants in the last ten years if we go by the fifteen dollar an hour. That's the max.
And that's doubling the the amount of.
I mean, if you if you, if you say the the appropriation to overlay for this has been fifteen thousand, right?
Right.
That is your cap.
Right, so I'm like.
That's how, so if you say, let's make it twenty, and it's a maximum of fifteen hundred per person.
Right.
It's fifteen hundred divided into twenty thousand gives you the number of people.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's really that simple.
Not everyone in the program wants to make the full amount. They want to do something meaningful. The person that you you as in your office, that person has never really sought to make the full amount. But again, wants to be, you know, of help to you and enjoys doing what, you know, working with numbers and and things like that.
We would have paid uh five hundredish dollars more this year. So I, I would like to uh make a motion.
I would just, all I'm, all I'm saying is, as long as we know what the number is, and I think everybody in the board is obviously on the side of of maxing this program out and doing as much as we can to lessen the barriers for all of the seniors. Oh, there's any question to that. I just want to make sure that we know exactly, right, what we're voting.
In in to in terms of knowing, I think, uh, Jody, this will be one of those things, we're making a change, a financial structural change right now to me, and I think about quarterly reviews, this would be one of those things we want to track to real time basis, so we see it grow through this fiscal year and know what we're getting into the next fiscal year. Does that make sense? You know, almost like a line item to call out of the day.
And and if you recall, we just, we just got some news from the, from actually the school. And, and if you recall, we just, we just got some news from the, from actually the school, school committee and the school department, that because of some changes on the state level and state funding, the, 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 uh, Mendenhampton Regional School budget has decreased several thousand dollars, which is gonna, which could have an impact on overlay.
Right.
Because, you know, we already talked about a, a shortage there in, in a mistake, and that's already, now, now we've just made that up. So we've got that room, and, uh, can we add that to the next agenda?
Yes.
Here on allocation of some of that money.
Yes.
If I can just point out to get clear, if you decide to expand the program.
Yep.
You will have, whatever you increase supply, will have that much less to allocate to all the other departments. It is part of the two and a half cap, so.
Which is exactly, which is exactly why I want to know what that number is. And I, I think we all agree in principle. I just would like to have a number, so what I'm gonna, unless somebody strongly disagrees, I'm gonna ask you to withdraw your motion and we're gonna put it on the agenda for two weeks, so we can quantify it, and then we can vote it with a number, and like I said.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I just feel like all the data is on this page right here.
All right, well, if you want to, if you want to put together a motion with a number and you can put a number in there to cap it, then let, that's fine.
Can I ask a quick, so, does a two-week delay for you impact what you're looking to get done?
No, no, not at all, I've been waiting, I've been waiting how many years?
That makes us.
Boy, oh, boy.
I mean.
Amy has run this program and driven it for the last, I can't remember how long it's been here, very successful. It deserves a lot of credit for, it's, it's, you know, somebody has to champion it within the town, or it doesn't work.
And it, it seems like a great benefit to the town in, in many ways, both not, I mean, it's not just for the individuals, but the town benefits as well.
Yeah, I, I do know, for example, we've had, had at least one veteran participating who in the past has helped assess the office grants.
So, I, I, I guess I kind of, I agree with Mike in that if we know, we can specifically outline the framework of the program, so we know what the number is and what the cap might be in terms of participation and management.
And you know, not unfortunately, but when I first came on board and, and started to manage this, um, I was basically told there is no cap and that there would be, you know, room for movement, that, that unfortunately makes me a little bit nervous, I'd like to know what the cap is. So if I have to say, you know, we already have, we've already filled all those slots, you know, I'm sorry, you know, maybe next year you can join or if someone drops out. But I've always been, you know, instructed, you know, but because, and it's always, if you look at the numbers, it's worked out pretty well that there are some people, like I said, that they'd only make half the amount, and that was happy, they wanted something meaningful to do that also helped to offset their taxes. But maybe they weren't, you know, assertive or, or maybe their health wasn't, wouldn't permit them to do the full amount, so, but I'd, I'd be happy with a cap.
I'm gonna tell, I, I have a concern that there's probably a great many people who are sixty or over, who could really use this and maybe don't know about it or don't know how to go about it.
Well, it's been our note, our newsletter.
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
I have no question that you've done everything you can do to, to get it out there.
Like Jean Berthold just sent somebody down to me yesterday, somebody came, because they go to her and her office for abatements and, and she, you know, she's a champion of this program, she brought it here, so.
So, if, if I could ask that, um, both of you and Kevin, if you're available too, could just plan to be on the agenda for the next meeting and figure out those numbers, it's two weeks from today, so that would be twentieth?
Twentieth. And then, and then by numbers, we're talking like scenarios, right?
Scenario, right.
This, this is how it could work.
Right.
And we can pick one that.
Just so we can make a motion and, and vote it and put a cap in it and know what it's gonna, know what the impact is gonna be, so that we know we're voting.
Good.
And then it just becomes a new line item.
Right.
Next year.
Right.
Well, it's probably.
Well, state line item.
Right, we just do a new number, right?
But we're just gonna, rather than say no.
We, we have a statutory mail that we need to have in every year based on uncollected property taxes and the average amount of abatements every year and anticipated appeals.
And this is, this, this would affect that abatement amount.
Right, well, once we have that money in there, then you put this in it.
This is.
We say we have 140,000 going into overlay.
Yep.
It could be twenty for this and the under twenty that we need by statute.
Yep, and then that breakout would be great, to, to understand that.
Yeah, I mean, right, right.
The composition of the overlay would be.
Right now, you know, we always go, okay, we need this, and it's fifteen for the seniors.
Yep.
So as long as we, you know, the total equals.
Yeah.
That program, and what we need, we're set, otherwise we have to make it up when it's set to tax rate.
Yeah, and I think how you manage that cap is, is up to you, like, I don't, I think, because as you said, like, you look here and there's ten people that clearly they're not doing it. A thousand hours, they're doing seven hundred hours, so if you could bring in fifteen people and eat up three hundred more hours, that, that benefits everybody, so. I think you can handle the management if we give you a money cap.
As long as, I, I'm gonna need more places for them to work, you know, productive places, so.
Well, we're, there's a lot of things that we're, are in the works right now, so there'll be, there'll be places for them to help.
Excellent, glad to hear that.
One, one point of clarification.
Sure.
Thinking scenarios without a vote, I think we're all in agreement that we need to move to minimum wage.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
There's no reason not. How soon would the 2,000 cap that you mentioned be coming?
I wouldn't, wouldn't even worry about the, the legislation that's going to.
Legislation.
There, there's no legislation I know of that's gonna raise the cap.
It's, it's in the works.
It's not filed.
Oh, no, it's not, so Dean just.
So it's an idea.
That's right, so we know what that means.
We know what that.
And you don't have to, you don't have to increase over that.
But I'm thinking if we're gonna run scenarios.
Sure.
We just want to be in a situation so that you can, you can give us the numbers, we know what the impact is, and we'll have a motion ready to, so we can look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Jen, did you have anything you wanted to add to this, or?
No, I just, I mean, Amy's done a great job of managing this program. Uh, I do know other towns, what they have done is, is put it on their website, you know, all the information is, is there. That could certainly be something that we, that we do as well, you know, along with the application process. And Amy's been managing that, but, uh, you know, I'm happy to help her manage any of the applications that come in. I mean, there's some basic backgrounds, uh, checks that need to be run, but, um, I'm not too concerned about, uh, the seniors that are coming in.
Might be good to have it on the assessors page as well as the senior center page.
Good, good point, good point, yes, and actually the treasurer's office, I'm gonna have to get in touch with you soon. We're, um, finalizing our numbers for this past fiscal year, so we'll be compensating the seniors soon for, and that's the hard part of the program. They worked all last year and then their compensation just comes to fruition now, but it is what it is and they don't seem to balk and, you know. So, it's that.
All right, awesome, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, so, and if you want to just stay here too, because I know you're.
If I can just ask you, just to, um, just give a shout out to Senior Citizen Day again, the date of it and where it is and.
Yes, please, uh, Sunday, September, um, seventeenth, eleven thirty. Um, I know Alana's already told me that she will be there, I know Representative Murray will be there, I'm still waiting to hear from Ryan Fatman and Senator, Congressman Auchanclaw, his staff has reached out to me. David, um, in your office gave me, uh, the contact information, so it should be a, a good turnout. Um, but yeah, so Sunday, the seven, seventeenth, I would love to have as many of you as possible.
And it's gonna be at the Unitarian Church.
Church, yeah.
Not at the senior center this year, but the Unitarian Church.
Right, we don't have the space there because our, we're, we approach about a hundred people there, and our capacity is fifty for the first floor at the center, so. They are, they are, so.
Russ and Ann Dudley.
Russ and Ann Dudley, and I know, will anyone else be there to help?
Oh, sure, of course.
Mike.
I'm gonna be out of town, but I'll be there in spirit.
Good, good, good. Okay, seventeenth.
And what time?
Uh, eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
They'll be coming from the fire station about eleven twenty, eleven twenty-five.
So about on Sunday, is that a Sunday?
Yes, the Patriots play at one, so we will be done accordingly.
Twelve fifty-nine.
I, I've been doing this for almost, I think this is my sixteenth or seventeenth year, Patriots always play.
So it's a week from this Sunday.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, Tom Sawyer. And it's really sweet because the past, past honorees oftentimes come, you know, so, darn trainer, yeah, you're gonna be elsewhere, okay.
All right, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Not gonna go anywhere, I'm gonna, I know Kevin's up, um, after me, but, um, just wanted to, you know, wanted to just bring to your attention that, um, and I know, Mike, you, you're aware of this. I contacted you in, in June, late June, late, uh, end of the fiscal year, when, um, UMass was hounding me to complete the survey that I had not found the time to do, and Kim was on her way, you know, um, and had instructed us to contact you. So this was, um, a survey about diversity, inclusion, equity and accessibility. And I'm like, oh, it's fine, I'll do it, I'll do it, it says it only takes twenty minutes, well, when I started.
Lot more than that, right?
It was a lot, well, because I couldn't answer a lot of the questions, it started out asking what kind of senior center we have and what kind of board I have, how many board members, and then wham, it goes into the town, and what is the town doing for diversity, um, inclusion and so forth? So I, you know, I reached out to Mike, Mike, um, had come back with you, you weren't sure if it's built into the personnel and, um, and she's, she's unfortunate. No, Jennifer, you're still there, um, I think you thought that it, it's built into the personnel, um, documents.
I looked through some of the personnel, um, policies today, I didn't see any, I did not see, um, like a diversity, equity and inclusion statement in, um, the policy that had been updated but not voted on. I, I haven't seen anything in there, but again, that was from 2019.
Yeah, I could, I could have saved you time, there isn't.
Okay, yeah, so, so again, as I, when Amy did ask me, I, I, you know, I looked into it, I didn't.
And there definitely needs to be, there's no question about that.
Yeah, so I, I'd sent you what UMass, you know, their definitions that we use, but I just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because that was the first survey, the second survey, which came later, was about the senior center and what are we doing? And I really feel like I need, we need, my board needs for the model to come from here, you know, and how, so what we've done, and we've got a beautiful flag out in our garden welcoming people, you know, um, you know, expressing, um, you know, a welcomeness for diversity and whatnot, inclusion. But, um, really would like it to start here and just wanted to bring it to your attention more than anything, because this is Mass Councils on Aging, of which, um, all the municipalities are available to be part of, they work closely with these universities and these surveys and, um, I haven't seen the full results of it, um, yet, but I just really feel that, you know, it needs to come from the select board. You know, and then we will follow suit and, you know, how we handle it, um.
Absolutely right.
Can that be a future agenda item also?
Sure.
And you may want to appoint a committee, or, um, you know, that's up to you, I suppose, but, um.
Yeah, DEI structure has changed a lot the last few years, and a lot of companies and towns are, are, you know, coming up with unique ways to, to do that, a committee is one, I don't know, I think we'd have to talk about our goals for DEI as a town, like, what is it that we're actually trying to improve? Like, yeah, okay, we can say that we're nice, but we should say that we're trying to include people for a reason, right? Like, there should be a reason that we're trying to change the diversity in the towns, like, we could talk about our demographics, uh, what we might want to change there and, uh, like, how we would focus on our current demographic, like, we don't have any of that, so that, but great point.
Good, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Great, and now I will talk to you about.
So we'll have you on the agenda in two weeks.
Did anybody know what the date is, my phone is.
The twentieth, October twentieth.
September.
Just wanna make sure it's not my anniversary, it's coming up soon.
Is that the first day of, uh, fall, or is that?
That's twenty-first.
Twenty-first is the first day?
I believe.
Last day of summer, then, select board meeting.
Yes, yeah, woo, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we have, I know this is the continuation, or you would, you had had your assessors meeting, and then I had talked to the finance director about this as well.
They all went, uh, they all went home.
They all went home?
Yeah, but they're voting me into the new chairman, they decided I shouldn't.
Oh, congratulations, sounds like everybody stepped back, I don't know.
Well, there's a reason for that, because, uh, outside of Elena, I think I am the expert in the room on means tested, having now got three of them through the legislature.
I would say, yeah, you're the primary expert, so.
Yeah, I'm also, uh, redrafting statewide bill right now, so. I think the first question they asked is, does everybody understand what the means tested exemption is?
Why don't you, why don't you explain it for the benefit of, number one, for the reporting and, and for anybody who's, I know there's, I don't know how many people are on, not many, but there will be people who will watch this, so.
You know, what year did we go to town meeting, was twenty twenty?
Yeah, twenty-one, I think, yeah.
Okay, the means tested senior exemption is an idea that more and more towns are adopting to supplement is existing exemptions for seniors that quite honestly, the amounts have not been raised in almost thirty years. The one main exemption is called, don't worry, we call it a forty, uh, a forty-one C, it's chapter fifty, uh, chapter fifty-nine, section fifty-nine, clause forty-one C. It's a $500 exemption, towns are eligible to raise that to a thousand, or at the thousand mark. Um, although the assessors do have a bill to make it optional, it's raised to two thousand. So the way this works is the idea means tested, all exemptions are means tested, it just means you meet a criteria. What this one does, um, and we're one of about twenty towns that has it now, it's based on the state has in the state income tax as a credit for seniors called the circuit breaker. And to get that, uh, when people do their taxes, they fill out something called Schedule CB. The current amount for that is, uh, for calendar year twenty-two's tax, the maximum amount was $1,200. So depending on where a senior's income is, they could earn up to that or earn less. We, the taxation aid committee, um, had been looking at this idea for a couple of years, and in 2021, we had an article unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, remember correctly, approved at the town meeting to petition the legislature to give a special legislation. Um, it took its normal, almost two-year course through all the committees, and former Governor Baker signed it into law late in calendar twenty-two. Meaning the first time we could offer it was in calendar twenty-three for fiscal twenty-four, just began. Um, so basically, it follows the criteria for the circuit breaker. And then says, basically, we started accepting applications in, I believe, June. And there was a very simple one-page application, you filled out, we verified that basically said you've lived in Mendenham for X number of years. By the fact that you got the CB and, um, the applicants will supply the proof of that from the state, you qualify here to reach people. Um, Jean Berthold, our principal assessor, mailed information on that to anybody who's gotten any type of exemption in the town with a veteran, senior, whatever, they all got the applications. And we had two articles in the new, and I can't remember the name of the paper, that replaced the town prior, had two articles in it. We had seventeen people applying or qualified, the one comment, uh, Jean got back from some people is they were not aware that the circuit breaker exemption existed, uh, because it's a stated, it's a state income tax exemption, not something the town publicizes, although we certainly make people know about. I, I personally got a call from somebody saying, how come nobody ever told me about this? So I know the taxation aid committee will be meeting in the next three or four weeks. One of the things I'm bringing up, uh, to it is doing a mailer early next year, right after the new year, to anybody over sixty-five, saying, please see if you qualify for the circuit break, see if we get the numbers up. So your part of it is.
So can I ask you, what are the qualifications?
The qualifications are, um, the value of your property is capped at a certain amount. If you have more than one acre of land, we can't count the excess, the value of the excess acre, uh, acreage. Um, you have to live in, in the town, I believe it's ten years. I don't know if you have access to the internet, they're buried in the back of my head, but the biggest one is, is, uh, if you're a single filer, a joint filer, or a is one of the categories.
Is it, is it sixty?
Is it, is it 60 or 65 or 68?
65.
65.
And I believe, oh, thank you. There we go. Okay. So the, the income could not exceed $64,000 for a single, not had a household, $80,000 for a household and $96,000 for married couple filing a joint return. Your assets could not exceed, the value of your house could not exceed under 50,000. It's pretty broad-based. We don't have water and sewer bills for the most people. That's taken into account. And then it was that income could, your expenses cannot equal above a certain percentage of your income. And you, and you qualify. So the maximum you could have gotten was $1,200 this year. Some people get less, whatever. The interesting thing about the circuit breaker is if you're a senior and you don't make enough money to file an income tax return and you filed the CB and you sort of automatically qualify, you don't get the credit off your, many of your income tax, the state mails you checked. So there are a large number of people who have been getting this in the past who are really low in income. And the whole guise of this was it's coincidence, but I'm sure you will realize that during the four years of fiscal 20 to 23, everybody's value went up rather substantially. Since we had the reverse COVID real estate effect, everybody thought the economy would crater and instead housing prices took off. They're still high because nobody's putting anything on the market. Because nobody's buying because they don't want to pay 7% when a year ago they could have paid 1%, 2%. But anyway, you know, the impact is on seniors has gotten more severe. And the idea is tied in with everything else that people want to do is let seniors age in place. It's much cheaper for somebody to stay in their house that they've lived in their whole life than it is to put them in a hole.
Are you able to target your mailing to more data than just 65? Like, do we have information on people who would qualify by any of those amounts? Are we able to exclude anybody?
We don't have the income amount. That would, that would involve knowing what they pay in taxes. We're not allowed to do that. What we can do is through the town census, we pretty much know who's over 65.
When you, but when somebody comes to file for the abatement, they have to make that information known.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, that's why anybody who got previously got an exemption got one. So the way, the way this works is by the schedule, this is the one that expired August 31st. And the reason is so we could compile the data in September and know how many applied and what the lump sum they're eligible for is to present to you folks. And then you get to pick of that $1,200 between 50 and 200% as the amount you're going to give to people. So we know the total request was 17,000 or eligibility was $17,932. So the chart I gave you says basically the total amount that would go out to people as an exemption, meaning it comes off their bill, at 50% would be roughly $9,000, at 100%, 18,000, and 200%, 36,000. It kind of illustrate the burden on people, which is not really the way it works because it depends on the value of your house. But just looking at the number, single family homes in town, at 50%, you're asking the rest of the, all the homeowners in town, including the 17 people, to pay an extra $5 a year, up to an extra $18 a year. So basically the value judgment is, are you willing to pay at the top level of 200%, 18,020 more a year in your tax bill roughly to help 17 people?
So, and just to clarify, the, there's no reduction in revenue, reallocating the revenue to other, the rest of the homeowners in the town.
This is unique in that this exemption does not come out of overlay. It in effect creates a dual tax rate. One for residents and one for business and industry, and that business and industry, the commercial industrial personal. Let's say it better. When we come in for the classification hearing in probably late November after the town meeting, normally we say, here's the rate. If it was one rate, we give examples for two. The residential rate in this case will be fraction of cents higher than it would be for commercial industrial personal property, because this amount of money, whether it be the 9,000 or the 36,000, gets spread across all the residential property owners in town.
Only residential.
Only residential. And it does not go to the commercial industrial personal property because they don't benefit from it. And so the department of revenue will do it. The reason why you get to pick the amount, the percentage amount, is because by law, when we come in for the classification, you set the percentage of whether we have one rate or two rates or three rates, but by law, it is your responsibility. So we got the number done early. I know you probably want to digest this, think about it. I'm not suggesting make a decision tonight, since I'm already on the agenda for the 20th. Maybe you could digest and look at it, but the basic thrust of it is you're talking about $19 more on your tax bill. And if you have a, you know, million dollar house, it's going to be a little more of that. If you have a $300,000 house, it's going to be a little less than that. But this is a way of giving you the impact.
Can you clarify? We would vote on this each year. So each year, based on, we would have access to the number of.
Right. Prior to the classification hearing. Because when you vote on that percentage, we go back and then we have to build that into the calculations, the tax rate. And when we come in, we would say, if we didn't have this, the average home would be paying this. If we do have this, it's now this.
I just want to make sure I understand that for this fiscal year that we're in now.
Yes.
There are 17 people who have applied. The deadline was August 31st.
And they all qualified.
All right. So the 17 people, so there, it, it, there will not be, be any more than the 17.
There will be no more.
You calculated the number so that if we were to make a motion to set the rate for the senior citizen property tax exemption at 200%, that would be a total impact of $35,864.
Spread across.
Or.
The residences in town.
Or $8.19 per single family home in Mendon.
That's a good way of looking at the average, but again, it, it will be based in the value of your home. I just divided that amount by the number, single family homes. We have what? Eight or nine duplex condos. Well, let's see, we've got the four across the street, whatever. So it, it might be divided, instead of divided by 1972, it could be 2,000. But that's just an approximation.
Right.
Which is a lot less than we figured when we.
Well, you're going to have, but you're not going to be able to get a, any better number than this. Like the, the last thing we pushed it off is we're looking, we're looking for specifics. You're giving us specifics.
Those are the numbers. And what we need is, is hopefully by, you know, early October, you can give us the percentage. And then Jean will do two things. One is for those 17 people, she can calculate the exact exemptions each person gets, which the board will then vote on. And by the time Jody gets ready to issue the last two quarters, that we call the real amount bills, those can be exempted in that. So we don't have to do it afterwards, get the money back. And the second thing is when we set the tax rate, there is a form that the assessors fill out every year called the LA5. This is becoming so popular, there's now a form built in that where first you set the tax rate, it says, this is the normal rate at one rate, and then you put that in and it says, okay, residential now went up to you know, a fraction of.
Yeah, but it's just going to, it's going to impact the total tax revenue by $35,864.
The revenue coming to the town stays the same.
No, but, but what I'm saying is, is 35,864 would be changed from the 17 tax bills spread out over all the other tax.
Right. All of us here are now sharing that. So every homeowner in town is now sharing a 200% in that $36,000. And the other part of, of this bill is in the May 25 annual town meeting, which will be the third year we're doing this. We'll, we have to put an article on to see if the town wants to continue this.
Yeah.
And then every third year after that, you do it. If people say, no, that's way too much. I don't want to do it. You get rid of it. So the people, so the people had a say in saying, we want this. Then every three years they have a say, saying, continue it. You guys set the percentage. So your board has a say and the assessors just administer.
Can I ask, this makes a big difference in these people's lives? Is that true?
It, it, will it what?
This makes a huge difference?
Well, let's say you, okay, let's say you.
We've been talking money. I just wanted to.
All right, sure. Let's say your tax bill, all right, I'll, I'll, let me use my bill. Uh, my bill's about $4,200 a year. I am of the age to qualify if, when I retire or I'm actually eligible. So let's say I qualify for the $1,041 exemption. I now get around to 3,200. And with this one, the maximum is 1,200. Let's say I hit that, I now go to at 1,900 or 2,900?
2,000.
Thank you. Let's cut my bill in half. Let's say I get this and I do the work off. At 1,500 here and 1,200 here, I just got 2,700 off my bill. I cut my bill in half.
There or there?
It's significant.
What's your question, Bob?
Where do you want to say? Tax payers, that's all. If you're going to cut your bill in half.
Well, it's $18 a year on average for 200% coverage.
Which means that it's 30, right now, if we were to give them, if we were to do the 200%, it'd be $35,864 divided over 1,972 tax bills. Some would be, yeah, some would be more, because let's say, let's say that, and that's, that's based, assuming, let's say the average house was worth, I don't know, 400,000. Maybe it's, well, but, but no, what I, I'm, I'm trying to make an illustration. So what we're saying is if, if it's 1819, that's based on the average house. So if your house is worth, say, a million, right? That impact would be about $40 a year.
So that's what I'm saying. I mean, look at that, what if states, every house is being built now?
Right.
There is still 400,000.
So, so my, so I guess what I'm getting at is if we were to make a motion to set it at 200%, the, the total impact of $35,864 or an average of $18.19 per single family home tax bill for the current fiscal year, based on the 17 qualified applicants, it can't go up any more than that. That is the, the impact is a total of 35,864 that's going to get for this fiscal year. And I.
Ready for such a motion.
That's what I'm asking for.
Well, I just, let me give an illustration. You do have a way of capping it, like in subsequent years. Let's say next year, the outreach is wildly successful and you have 30 people that qualify or 40, and now that 200% number is up, you know, creeping up to 70, 80,000. You couldn't bracket it down to 50% and say, we're going to cap the people's entry.
Right. Right. That's why this vote is only for this, this only applies to this current fiscal year. Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a maybe a note of caution, because we keep talking about these individual financial decisions in a silo.
Yep.
So, I mean, I want to do this. I mean, if you were to ask me where I'd go, I'd probably go 100% to start, not 200%. Probably because I know, you know, this will feel like override. This is being set up like an override to, to, to the homeowners impacted, right? We know there is going to be other burdens coming our way. We know this will reduce revenue for the town. But we also got to think about.
It's not going to.
This.
It doesn't reduce revenue.
Said that, it will not.
Right, yeah.
But in this coming budget, we also have to pull in the library budget, which we split 50, 50, you know what I mean? So I, I, I just want, we got to look at this at a macro level and say, what are all the, these little things will add up. That's my.
Right, but that's why I'm saying, but that's next year. That's not this year.
Well, well, like the library is an example, it's potentially this year unless they're willing to use some of their state funding.
Oh, what, what I'm saying is this is, this is now, because like you said, the two, the two tax bills, two next tax bills, which is the rest of this fiscal year, the budget's not going to change. It's just the, the, the burden is going to shift off of these 17 people for a total of 35,864.
I, I think. I think your, your concern is that the burden on the individual taxpayers.
Right.
Potentially going to have other.
Right. If you're, through the budget process, we're coming, say, for an operational override, then that's another piece we're adding on. So my point is, Mike, it, it's not not to do it. I'm just saying, we, I just want to make sure we're considering the whole, all the ancillary impacts potentially, because it's easy to look at this and say $20. But then if it's somebody who's paying $18 and gets another 120 because there's an override, you know, these things will add up. I just want us to be conscious of, don't deal with this in silence.
But again, the, and the override is going to be, if, if it was to happen, we're not, we're not.
And I'm not suggesting there is no override. I'm suggesting, I do think that I would be pushed to incorporate the full.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, but that's next year, not this year.
And I will tell you candidly, Mike, I was going to look at this and say, let's try it at 50% because I saw the numbers and I said.
Yeah, because I, I was.
Try it at 100%, fine with me. I mean, I'm making my own value judgment. Put 100% at nine bucks, that's a cup, cup of coffee and a half and duck and donut.
And I'm, and that's why, Mike, I was, I, I, I'm in agreement with, with you, with your philosophy, but I've had another 24 hours or 36 hours to digest this because I talked to them yesterday about it. And, and, and Jean explained the numbers to me just the way that Kevin did now.
That's why.
That's why I just, but again, I'm just one member of this.
I guess one, one consideration I have is so presumably these same people will apply next year. And if we have a large number of applicant, applicants next year and decide to fund it lower, it could be, it could feel like a loss to them if we have to go from 200 lower, like.
Right. Well, I'll also tell you, Elena, with the towns that have it in place for a couple of years have found out that by the time the people hit the third year, this has knocked them out of contention for the third year. They get it for two years and it alters their income and tax payments.
Oh.
So you typically see one, a group drop out and another group come in.
I see. Interesting.
So they're cycled through. But the, the, the other thing is you need to know is the state raises the maximum of the year on the circuit breaker. So this year it's 1,200 max, next year it could be 1,300. And the other thing to be, to be really candid about, and Governor Baker opposed it. Governor Healy supports it, both the Senate and House support it. There is a bill pending, double the smell. So very conceivably next year, the maximum could be 2,400. And if you had to send 17 people, you'd be talking about 70,000. You know, you might see the assessors come in and say, fracture it down to keep the impact on tax rates.
But, but either way, we would have to, regardless, we have to vote it again next year.
Yeah.
Something we vote every year.
But the, the reason why you have a sliding scale on the percentage is that actually puts your board in control of the impact on the taxpayer. So let's say the 200% is 18 this year.
So are towns adjusting every year? Is that what you found is?
Well, we have to vote it every year.
You have to vote it every year.
I'm just wondering what the precedent is.
The towns who have this, I mean, it's fairly new, the other town.
We only had it.
There's only one town that's been doing it for longer than three years and that's Hockington.
Okay.
The other, the other towns are in year two or three. A couple of towns on the North Shore have set it permanently at a fixed 200%. I don't know what they're going to do if that bill passes to double it, because they're locked in.
Well, they'll have to vote, right?
I also.
No, their, their bill is locked in at 200%.
So they pass it in town meeting?
Oh.
So that's their.
Yeah, well, they pass it to town meetings, so they'd have to.
Yeah.
So the, so the town would have to vote to change it as a bylaw, right? Well, whatever they are.
State law has to change because this is an enactment of the state. So I mean, the beauty of this is you could pick the percentage every year and say, we don't want it to impact people more than these many dollars a year. And you do that by controlling the percentage.
I appreciate that you have the range of percentages here.
Well, how, how, how do I ask you guys to pick? Well, how, how, how do I ask you guys to pick a percentage if you don't see what it is?
Yeah, no, it's nice. I mean, well, it's nice that you.
Well, it's relative to itself, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, just an Excel spreadsheet, you just put in the number, it calculates, but, uh.
Alright, so do we want to table this for two weeks, or do we want to make a motion now?
Digest it.
No, I mean, I, I think the information's there, so, I mean, unless, unless.
Well, right, the information's there, but.
I'd be more inclined to start somewhere in the middle to ratchet, so we have more down.
Well, we can, just so we're clear, this is just a vote, just for this year. So we're going to have to vote again next year to ratchet it. So whether you pick one hundred, two hundred, or fifty, you're going to have to vote it again next year, so.
Just don't want to set expectations and then pull back.
Right, that's what I was concerned about, that it might be like a, a loss for those people if we have to reduce it, do it, but. Um, I mean, I feel like it lead, I, I was actually leaning towards a hundred.
I have circled on my paper.
Okay, because I'm like, ooh, what's the difference?
Hundred and fifty percent is more than a hundred and gives room.
Right, and it gives, it's, uh, solidly, you know.
Fourteen dollars per household, give or take.
It's like eighteen hundred dollars from, uh, like, for the household. A hundred percent is twelve hundred, another six hundred, so.
Alright, I'd like to propose a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, percentage rate at a hundred and fifty percent.
Second. Any, any more discussion?
Sounds like a compromise.
Sound, yeah, sounds, sounds.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, so we said a hundred fifty percent.
I could just ask Mr. Goddard one question. You and I were going to get together before this year's classification hearings.
We should still.
Can you think of a percent you want to shift the commercial to, so we could run all the numbers for you?
No, let me follow up for you. I, I think what we're going to talk about, what are the different opportunities, not just split, uh.
Yeah.
Patrick, I mean, I'll just shoot you an email, and we can catch up, talk a little bit.
Okay.
As you had read, done some reading, uh, on it, I was trying to get it, get the, uh, information from you.
Yeah, important, important thing to realize is, if you do raise the commercial industrial personal, all the land under chapter land, the farmland goes up with it, because the state considers that.
Yeah, I think this is more about maybe you educating me on what the different opportunities or impacts are, things like that. And Brendan had even mentioned something about wanting to get, understand that too, so I'll, I'll reach out to you, thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've had it on since last year to, to do it, just wanted to make sure you got re-elected.
So, so Jody, I know when we spoke at our, at our last regular meeting, uh, we talked about the, um, the DLS study and what your thoughts were on your financial team. I think you said to me that you, you, you had plans to talk with, with David about it, but he just, it hasn't happened yet, so you're not ready.
It, it, it wasn't so much about, um, David necessarily not being here, but, um, just vacations and being out of the office. And my target for that, based on our last discussion, was like early October, four to six weeks, to be able to kind of come back and talk through two main things. One would be just recommendations, um, that we thought would be, um, easy to tackle. Not easy, but you know what I mean? Uh, some logical things to, to take first steps. And then the second part would be to sort of create that high-level framework for, um, some financial planning.
Okay. Alright.
You just did. Mr. O'Brien and I had conversations with the principal authors of the study regarding the recommendation of assessors. And what they told us point-blank was, that was not the recommendation, that was a scenario to look at, but not the scenario.
Well, we have, we have what they wrote.
And I'm trying to get that statement from them in writing, that it was.
Well, it's published, it's on the.
Right, but that is not the, you must, or you should do this.
Of course, well, none of it, well, it's up to us to do that, but that was their recommendation. What they put in writing was their recommendation based on all of the feedback they got from all of the stakeholders.
Correct, except what they put in for assessors is boilerplate they're handing out all over the state. It, it has nothing to do with Bendon. They're literally giving that to every city in town and saying, this is our recommendation. Whether it fits or not.
It's, I mean, I think, uh, I've seen similar language in other areas of their recommendation showing up in other studies they've done, so that might, you know. I think they have a, I think they have a best practice they're trying to solve for here.
And, and quite honestly, the State Assessors Association challenged them in the idea of not having elected people on the grounds that, well, if, if your rationale is you can't get good people to run, where are you going to get good people to appoint?
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Number, number ten, which is, um, highway. Unfortunately, the interim highway surveyor is ill. So I just have a couple of emails that, um, that he had sent that he was going to talk about. One of them has to do with, um, uh, assault contract for, for next year. I, I've been, basically, uh, he talked to Lee Salt, who they made the contract with last year. Um, he explained to them what we were budgeted at. And, um, he said, which they'd be, we would be able to purchase eleven hundred tons based on the budget number. Down from eighteen seventy-five, we committed to not, last year. He explained to them, you know, the si, scenario. And, um, they said, that's fine, they would give us the contract and keep us within the budget. And they also agreed with him that if we do need more, they would give us the same rate. Um, once, once the town, once the select board and the FinCom approved it, so they would approve it before he deficit spent it, so. So that was the first thing. Uh, the second issue, um, had to do with snow con, with, uh, snow contractors. He wants to keep the hourly rate the same. He looked at the budget while staying within it. He'd like to offer eleven contracts, the thousand-dollar sign-on bonus, which will be paid in two increments, five hundred each. He'd like to guarantee them, make a two thousand dollar guarantee. He said that would keep us within budget and be enough of an incentive to get the same guys back, so we have enough staffing. Um, he was going to start reaching out to them to see who's interested. Um, he also wants to hire three part-time employees to drive the trucks, um, offering them, uh, thirty dollars an hour. One requires a CDL license. Uh, last year, we were paying them, uh, thirty-five, uh, last year we were paying the CDL driver thirty-five, so he's been, uh, he's been a crucial part of the six-person team. Uh, but he's not returning this season. He has someone with a CDL already committed, and he's going to offer that person thirty-two fifty. But, um, he'll be back in a few weeks, but I just, I guess what I was trying to do is give you all an update that, um, he has negotiated within the budget so that he won't deficit spend, and he, um, and he, he got them, right, and he got the, uh, he, he convinced the contractor to, um, you know, the con, people that, giving the contract to, to give him the same deal, even though he's not committing to the same tonnage. So, excellent. That's, uh, that's number ten. And then the last, I know we had, we had talked multiple times about, you know, picking assignments for various boards and committees. So what I did was, I just went on the site and I printed out all of them, so. I don't know if anybody has any, um, any specific ones that they want to, uh, claim or identify that, you know, you, you want to commit to.
I'd like to continue with the ones that I've been tending.
Okay. Sure. How do we want to do this? Want me just make notes on these of who's where?
Do you want us to, like, circle?
Well, I'm thinking, well, what I'm, well, I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, well, let, let's do that. Why don't you, why don't you put your name at the top, circle the ones you want, send them all to me, I'm going to give them all to David. And what we'll do is, in two weeks, we'll see which ones still need assignments, we'll figure it out.
Is the expectation that we attend every meeting, or just?
No, no, you're, you'd be the, you'd be the liaison. I mean, that, that, that would be ideal, right, that you're there every time? But that way, you know, and there's, there's a few, a, a few chairs of different ones that reach out to me. But the idea is you'd be the go-to person for them on that board, the idea that you would, you know, that one of the reasons we have the remote meeting, so you can visit or go in person anytime you want.
I think, um, some of them too, the, what we're doing with the, the building committee.
Right.
Primary and the alternate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I might recommend, I think we do that with the school committee, we, we tag-team it last year. That's like the, like, planning board, pretty significant one.
Com-Ca on the last, like, three and a half hours.
Um, so maybe that's a consideration too, if there's multiple people interested, um.
The other reason it's important too is sometimes, you know, one of us might want to visit a particular committee, and it's not an issue if you're not going to speak or deliberate or, but, you know, it gets sticky if there's three of us at a meeting and we're not posted. And some of these are, um, like the CPC, that, that's, actually, I'm a voting member, so I'd like to stay with it, but that's, that's an appointed as opposed to just.
Right, same, same with land use.
Yeah, right. So just what I'd ask is, if you could just do this and leave them there, I have a, I have a folder here that David had started with all the, so I'm going to leave this with all this information, so that we'll know, you know, where there are vacancies for the next meeting. But this is a good place to start, right? Sure?
I thought we did that.
Yeah, as I, well, as I talked about, there is, there is no one, there is not a member of this board that will be appointed, but somebody will attend the meetings. And that's what, that's what this is doing, that'll be, that's one of these, that, that's what we're doing.
And that's, I, it's, I did hear, so I wasn't catching everything that you were saying, so I very well, that one, make sure I do this.
Yep. So if, if, if there is a board or a committee that's not, you don't see it on here for some reason, just write it in. So our next meeting will be in, in two weeks, which is September twentieth at six-thirty. So I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
During the eight fifteen, thank you very much.
Go to the block party this week.
Don't forget, Rock the Block, two o'clock at the, at the Memorial Field.
Harking over across some bluff.
Right.
I'll be hanging out at the, the booth for the senior center, friends of men and elders.
Great.
You guys are going to be out.